Mayor Protem Brian Mechacheck, since you have an iPad, would you lead us in the pledge?
Well, Mayor, can I start with the House rules first before we begin?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you for joining us this evening for the March 1st, 2022, Monteserino City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regularly. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and then able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, we are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to here to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes of this meeting will be taken by the council.
Thank you very much. And now we can go to the pledge of allegiance, Mayor Protem Brian Mechacheck, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
Sure. Do we want to do a roll call first?
I think we do the roll call after that.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And the next item is a roll call. Just go ahead with that.
That's a member Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Newfield.
Present.
Mayor Pretent Mechacheck.
Present.
Mayor Lahey.
Is it?
And Councilmember Turner is outfit. You have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? Anyone wish to change? The number of any of the items to any other item? I don't have any. I don't see any hands. I guess we can continue. We have presentations. The first one is the recognition of the 2021 STEM winners.
Mayor, I do not see Mr. Forrest Williams as an attendee. Perhaps we can skip that presentation and see if he joins later on.
All right. Thank you for that. Next item is a proclamation for the American Red Cross month. So issuing a proclamation for that. And it's been.
I'm you. Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, we can hear you. Okay. My name is Ken Tora. I am the CEO of Red Cross, Silicon Valley. I live in Monteserino. And it's my pleasure to thank you so much for your support of American Red Cross. And just want to tell you a few things about this past year for us. Santa Clara County alone, 2021, we assisted over 200 families in 116 emergencies responding to two to three home fires a week. We collected 17,400 units of blood through 500 blood drives and one pint of blood saves three lives. We helped 900, we provided 900 services to the military members and their families. And we trained 9,000 people in first aid CPR, AED and water safety. So we're very proud of those accomplishments. I want to point out two additional things for for you, pretty much hot off the presses. The International Committee of the Red Cross and the Federation of Red Cross and Red Crescent societies and American Red Cross is working together to address those who have been impacted in Ukraine. We've been actually in Ukraine for eight years. Most people don't know that, but as a conflict is changing rapidly, we're jumping into action. We're providing home heat fuel because it's very cold there. And also partnering with organizations to repair their infrastructure, supply healthcare facilities, medication, equipment, providing families with food and hygiene items. And we've distributed 30,000 food and hygiene parcels and have assisted with the evacuation of people with disabilities. So we're very proud of the efforts that we're doing. And this is a obviously a very live situation. And so we continue to work with our global partners to address those needs. The other thing hot off the presses today is that we are resuming our testing of blood for blood platelet plasma donations for COVID-19 antibodies beginning March the 7th. And we're we're instead testing this time for routine blood platelet and plasma donations as opposed to just recruiting donors specifically for ephornesis convalescent plasma. And this very important plasma helps to meet FDA's criteria for convalescent plasma to be used to treat immunocompromised patients battling COVID. So it's very, very important thing to do to get blood and certainly to to participate in this antibody program. So I'm very proud of the work that we do. I'm thrilled that Monteserino is such a terrific partner of ours and appreciate everything you do, your 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 support. And hopefully we'll continue to be able to meet the the mission of our organization into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate your presentation. I think your presentation is very timely and whatever you're doing to assist is required. I would urge everybody to support you and contribute to you. And you may want to go to our website. Monteserino also has some small grants issued for community service. Your organization might want to apply for those. So we proclaim this month as a Red Cross month and we wish you the best.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Anybody else want to comment on this particular matter? Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Tauran again for all of the work that you do. And I did read about read about the IFRC earlier today. So that is very timely. So I just how much we appreciate everything that you guys do at the Red Cross for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? All right. So thank you so much. Really appreciate that, Ken.
Okay.
For your efforts.
Thanks.
And for bringing this to our attention this month. This is really very timely. All right. Moving along. We have a presentation for from the San Jose Water Company. Mr. John Tang has been kind enough to join us. Is there a staff report first or do we go right into the presentation?
Mayor, Mayor Lahey, we just go right into the presentation and then we will accept, of course, questions for if if the council has any for Mr. Tang at the conclusion of the presentation.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Tang, you ready to proceed?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Council members and staff, I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. And I hope you are all staying well in the face of COVID. I think it's certainly very appropriate that I'm presenting to you on March 1st because every first of the month from about November until April, the Department of Water Resources will go out and do their snow measurement. And so today they did their snow measurement. The last one, the last official one will take place on April 1st. And today's snow measurement, they found that it was about 67% of average. And so the, I'm sure you've seen all the headlines about this. And these are just some of the headlines. This was prepared, this deck was prepared a couple of weeks ago. And so it's a it's a little bit dated, but obviously now that we're in March, in March, in March, January and February were the driest two-month period in the history that that has been recorded. And so things started out, as you know, on a very positive note in October. And then we had a record December and it has been, you know, pretty much dry ever since December. And so the last time we had a miracle march was actually in 1991. And so that was over 30 years ago. And so we will see what happens with Mother Nature. There's a great website that I go to. It's called tropicaltidbits.com. And they have long-range weather forecasts that go out about 14 days. And so I try to keep an eye on that. The weather, the weather, people say that anything beyond seven days is subject to high degrees of variability, but it does give you some some ideas about about what we can expect over the course of the next next couple of weeks. So we will see what March brings. So just to kind of review the timeline a little bit with you. So Valley Water, our wholesale water supplier, declared mandatory conservation on June 9th. We activated our Rule 14.1, which is the conservation program without drought surcharges on August 5th in response to the June 9th declaration. Then we activated our Schedule 14.1 on November 15th. Schedule 14.1 is the drought surcharge program that is currently in effect now. We implemented that on December 13th of 2021. So we've been in the program now for a little more than a couple of months. There are three major components of our plan. We really took the lessons learned from the two other instances in our 155-year history when we've had to implement drought surcharges. The first was in the drought of 1987 to the early 1990s. Some of you might have remember been around and remember that drought. That was the first time we had to implement drought surcharges. The second time was from 2015 through 2017 during the last what they called historic drought. Now this is being called a historic drought and two historic droughts in the last five years. Or so I think when you start to use the word historic too often, maybe this is part of the new normal that we are going to be dealing with. So there are three major components of our conservation plan. We will establish water allocations, water budgets, if you will, based on a customer's individual 2019 usage. As you recall, back in 2015 through 2017, we used a system-wide average and applied that to everybody. And obviously that was met with with a lot of concern and a lot of resistance from, you know, from our West Valley communities who tend to have larger homes and larger lots. So we we certainly took that into consideration as we prepared our new plan. And so the customers' individual 2019 usage is going to be used as a baseline. We also recognize the fact that there are many customers who have been what I call super savers. They have been very, very in tune to conservation. They don't use a lot. They don't have very much landscaping. It is very, very difficult, in our opinion, to really ask those customers to conserve another 15% because there's just really no room for them to conserve. And so we have set a floor, if you will, or or set a minimum allocations to recognize the efforts of our low water using customers. And then the third part of the plan is obviously if customers exceed their water allocations in any particular billing period, then there are drought surcharges for those exceedances. The allocations I think are fairly simple. I got some feedback from Mayor Protem Mechacheck last night. Appreciated that. And I'll talk a little bit about about kind of the nuances of that as we go in. But essentially, we bill bimonthly. And so the bimonthly allocations are printed on the bills. If you use 40 CCF, CCF is a centim cubic feet or 100 cubic feet or 748 gallons. If you use 40 CCFs in 2019, you're being asked to reduce 15% or 60 CCFs. And so your current allocation is going to be 34 CCFs for this for this billing period. I talked about the floor that we have, and this floor is really the 2019 monthly average residential usage. Our average typical customer is probably a family of four here in the Bay Area. And so I'm sorry, here in our service area, I should say. And so we took the monthly average and said, you know, let's take 15% off of that and use that as our floor because there are a lot of people who are super savers who are already well below these amounts. And as you can see, when you take the 2019 average and you apply a 15% reduction to that, those are the numbers that you get. And these represent the minimum allocations that people will see on their on their bills. And I'd like to point out that you can see how they vary from month to month. Typically, there's it's a little bit of a bell curve, if you will. The lowest months are in the winter and then it starts to ramp up and peaks actually in in October, which tends to be, you know, our hottest and highest water-using month. So part of part of our work is really to try and explain to customers what their allocation is. And we sent out a letter to everybody. I'm hoping that you got your letter. I'm hoping that like like my letter, it's taped to to my refrigerator. I'm hoping that that was informative for you, but it doesn't really explain the whole story. And this is where the the feedback that I got from Mayor Protem Mechacheck last night. So we bill on a 60-day period. There are very few customers that actually get billed, say, on January 1st through February 28th, which is a two-month billing period. It just doesn't quite work out as cleanly as that. So what we have to do is we actually have to calculate what the average daily use is for a customer who's billed, you know, say for for this this example right here where they would build their their two-month period. The first two-month period was July 12th to September 10th. And then the second two-month period was from September 10th through November 6th. And so we calculate an average daily use based on the consumption for those billing periods. And then we try to determine, okay, how many days were there in September for the first bill? How many days were there in September for the second bill? And we add up those totals. We take a 15% conservation reduction and then we round up. Obviously, we can't really, we don't measure in partial units when we go out and measure your water meter. We bill in partial units when you see that, but we don't measure in partial units. And so we round up. And obviously that is to the customers' customers' favor. And I think it makes sense to round up. You really can't use, you know, a partial CCF. So this is all on our website. And I understand that you know, the letter does not explain it in this detail. However, as you can imagine, there are every situation, every household is potentially going to have, you know, a slightly different number than somebody else because we're doing it based on an individual usage. And so I'm hoping that, you know, the letter kind of explains kind of at a high level what our plan is. I'm hoping that it has enough information on there where people will go to our website and look at some of the additional information that we have. So drought surcharges, that's the third part of our plan. So if you have customer A, if customer A has an allocation of 20 CCFs for a two-month period and you only use a 17 during that period, then no drought surcharges are applied because customer A use less than the allocation. We have a situation where customer B has an allocation of 30 CCFs, but actually used 40 CCF. So customer B exceeded the allocation by 10 CCFs. And so all 40 CCFs are going to be charged at the regular rates for for service. And then the additional 10 CCFs is charged at the current tier three rate, which is $7.13. So this customer will see a $71.30 charge for for the allocations on his or her bill. And we understand that every customer situation is different. We have an appeals process that has been very, very very, very robust. We know that people are going to have changes in their lives, changes in their situations in 2019. I mean, obviously, that is probably an understatement what we've gone through in the last couple of years. Some of the most common reasons for appeal are the number of people in the home, if they have health issues. Should you not be a customer of San Jose Water in 2019? Or should you have not been in the home that you're in now in 2019? We will establish, we will use the minimum allocations to use to establish your water allocation. And obviously, you can contact us. Any customer can contact us and say, hey, I don't think that's right. I think it should be a different number. And we will certainly, we will certainly consider that. Lastly, you know, informing and engaging our customers is important. And I'm I apologize to my colleague Tricia Zacharison, our Vice President of Customer Service. She is also on the call tonight and can help answer any questions that you may have. But she leads our customer service department, obviously been very, very busy dealing with customer questions related to this. You have our letter. We have sent out a brochure. We we are using every tool at our disposal because not everyone receives information in the same way or wants to receive information in the same way. And I think if there's one thing that I can leave our residents and your constituents with tonight who are listening is if they go to sjwater.com/drought, there is a comprehensive webpage that provides a lot of the information that we have out there for this. And then lastly, I just wanted to share with you, this comes from Valley Water. They report water usage every every month. There's a little bit of a lag because there's some analysis that needs to be done by Valley Water. But this is the top graph that you see is for all retailers. So there are 13 retailers that Valley Water delivers water to. And then on the bottom, you see San Jose Water Company. And so you see that, you know, the the two graphs are very, very similar to one another. We are the largest retailer in the in the valley. We are larger when you look at it on a volume basis than all the other 12 water retailers that purchase from from Valley Water. And so you can see how similar our graph is with the one for all retailers. And and I should caution here as well in that as we go forward in January and February and March, you will likely see the numbers not be favorable from a conservation standpoint. And there's actually a very, very good reason for that. The conservation rules and the conservation recommendations are really focused on outdoor watering. And outdoor watering typically doesn't occur in the in the wintertime. And so really, it's really hard to ask people to conserve indoor because now it becomes a quality of life issue, it becomes a public health issue potentially. And so Valley Water won't be surprised, and I hope you won't be surprised, I believe. Councilmember Lawler, you were on the Water Commission, I believe. Mayor Protem Mechacheck, you're the alternate. They report this every month. And so you might see actually it go up, but the reality is that, you know, the bulk of the conservation savings will happen in the warmer months of the year, as we can see on this graph, on both on both graphs, actually. So with that, that's really, that's really my my presentation tonight. And Tricia and I are happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Councilmembers, if you have any questions, please go ahead. Good time to ask. Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you both for being here and explaining this to us and to our residents. I think having that dollar amount, knowing that they're going to be charged $7.13 per extra unit is helpful. And I appreciate the work that you've done to make that clear for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You have any other questions? Okay, I've got a few I wanted to cover. I guess the emphasis has been to try to get people to reduce their water consumption. And the water shortage is happening because of climate change, basically because of the dry weather. Is the San Jose Water or Valley Water, anybody else focused at all on that part of it to see how how climate change effects could be mitigated?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Lahey. We we have a sustainability here at San Jose Water Company. I know that Valley Water is doing some sustainable, sustainable sustainability work as well on that. Part of it is to look at the climate change impacts that you're talking about. A lot of it is focused on you know, reducing our environmental footprint. You know, look, we are a water utility. You cannot be in the water utility business and not be somehow interconnected with the environment. Water touches everything that's important to us, from recreation to public health to public safety. And so we really have to take care of the environment where we live, work and serve. And that is reflected in the work that we're doing to really try and drive our energy usage to really reduce our environmental footprint. On the other side of the coin, I will tell you that there is a there's a concerted effort both at San Jose Water Company and at Valley Water to identify new water supplies that we're going to need. Conservation is is just one tool in the toolkit. We are not not going to conserve our way out of this. I'm sure you've heard of that that phrase before. We just can't keep asking customers to conserve, conserve and conserve. You know, I don't want to be telling you one day, you know, Mayor, you're going to shower from 6:00 to 6:05 because you live on that street and that's the address that you have. I mean, it's a little bit draconian, but you know, at the end of the 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 bottom line is that we need new water supplies. And there are very, very much great opportunities, both in recycled water as well as in as in desal water. And so we'll we'll look at that very, very closely and figure out where the opportunities are. With that, there will be a cost to that. There's there's no question about it. However, developing new water supplies is not something that you you can do overnight. It typically takes about 10 to 20 years to be able to do that. And so now's the time to really to really do that. We've been doing it. It's not, it's not like we're starting right now. But it does take some time to to bring something into fruition.
Yeah, I'm glad you're looking at that. And I don't know if you've specifically got anything. And you brought up a good point about recycling water. And part of it may be to try to reach out to homeowners so you can give them some barrels or whatever else to collect the rainwater or do something else. Are there any programs like that in effect?
Yeah, you know, it's a, that's a great question. Valley Water has several programs that are related to that. There are some, I think they have some gray water rebate programs on their website. If I'm not mistaken. And so we have some of that information on our website as well to point folks to those to those resources.
I'm just trying to figure out if you if you need to make any specific direct efforts to homeowners and everybody else. So they they know that those resources are available. Because a lot of time people just don't know or they don't, they're not going to go to websites. And I suppose it looks like from your curve, and maybe it's a winter month that the rate change may not have much effect. And my next question is going to be obviously with the additional money that you guys are going to collect. Is that earmark for water resources? What is that earmark for?
So if you are referring to the drought surcharges that we're collecting, Mayor, that actually goes into a special account and that will essentially blunt the the lost revenue that we will experience as a result of the conservation efforts of our customers. And so essentially, and I don't think I'm out of line by saying this, essentially that money is going to be refunded to customers by blunting the effects of the revenue losses. That's that's what's going to happen with that money.
Your curve didn't show much revenue loss at this point. So maybe it'll show up next year. And this one it looked like the, you know, especially for October, the rates, the graph was about the same as to what it was before, what it is now.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I misreading it?
No, no, this, no, you're you're not, you're not missing, you're not missing it. I think I think Valley Water is looking at it on a year-over-year basis. They're looking at it obviously on a month-to-month basis as well, but it's really the 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 N number that really counts for them. And so we want to be we want to be at 15% or Valley Water wants the retailers to be at 15% at the end of the year when we get there. Having said that, I will, I will play a little crystal ball here with with everyone in saying that April 1st will be the final official snow measurement by the Department of Water Resources. I suspect that if we don't get any real precipitation, if there's no miracle march, which, you know, obviously the last one happened over 30 years ago. I suspect that the governor and the state water board will take some additional actions that could be very similar to what we saw in 2015. Having said that, we are in good shape because Santa Clara County, as you know, we're already well ahead of the curve on that because of our current situation. If you recall, in 2015, we were the last one into the drought because we were in such a favorable situation. Governor Brown came here, signed some drought-related bills here and said, hey, Santa Clara County is a model for this. This time we were the first ones in because of Anderson, because of other water supply. This time, we were the first ones in because of Anderson, because of other water supply challenges that we're having, and so. I, I think stay, stay tuned is, is the word, but I, I anticipate that we will have some more guidance from the state. And, and possibly from Valley Water as well come April first.
Yeah, I, I don't envy your position, I mean, it's kind of, you've got a lot of balls to juggle, I have to make sure. At the end, the customers get what they need, are your rates different or your allocations different for commercial properties? This, or is this all, I mean, this is residential, you've got some allocation based on 2019, what do you do with commercial properties?
Right, so, so commercial properties, if they have a dedicated landscape account, again, we're, we're, we're talking about trying to save on outdoor watering. If there's a dedicated landscape account, those accounts are also subject to the fifteen percent conservation.
Yeah, I would encourage you to get directly involved with homeowners and other people to see if they can understand. How they can recycle, you know, when it does rain, and whatever it takes, because it. I guess these rates are going to bite at some point, but it looks like. They may not have much effect initially. So I, again, thank you very much for coming and thank you for presentation, and Tricia, thank you for being here also. And I do have, we do have a question for Mayor Protem Brian Mekachuk, please go ahead.
Thank you, I was just wondering if we have any questions from other people, from our constituents that have logged in. Were there any questions from them?
Any member of the public wish to address or ask any questions, please go ahead, this is the time. Okay, doesn't look like it.
Okay, i- if not. Mr. Tang, thank you very much, I know that you're doing everything that you can to help. Encourage the conservation of water, and. I think this is the new normal, that, that this isn't going away, and it's unfortunate, but. You know, I, I think that it would be, it would be good to see the city of Monte Sereno, our. Citizens and residents reducing their water consumption to meet that fifteen percent reduction. And hopefully everyone's going to pull together because, you know, we need. We need more water, and. So thank you very much, really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for your feedback yesterday as well, I appreciate that.
Great, thanks, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, have a great evening.
You're welcome, take care. All right, so we go to our next item, which is any oral communication we have received. If you have received any. Doesn't sound like it, are there any written communications that you've received?
No written communications.
All right, then we'll go to the consent calendar, anybody wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Just had a question regarding item three. If I didn't know if anybody wanted to discuss that, given the mask mandates set to expire. Tomorrow in Santa Clara County and March twelfth statewide, I don't know if there's. It, it, it seems to me that we're, we're returning back to, into, into an endemic stage, and perhaps. We might be able to meet in person.
All right, let's pull that item so we can discuss it. Councilmember, any questions, let's just get a staff report on. Well, let me, let me do this, the items one and two are okay. No, nobody wants to pull that, so let's do a motion to adopt those two items, can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay. Second. And second by, motion by Councilmember Lawler, second by Mayor Protem Mekachuk, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Luthen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler. Yes, Mayor Protem Mekachuk.
I.
And Mary Lahey.
I.
And passes four zero.
Thank you, and I, I think I asked members of the public if anybody had any things they wanted to pull on consent calendar, if not, I will repeat that. Does anybody have any other?
Just staff that are attendees right now.
All right, sounds good, so we now have item number three, which you pulled, so let's go ahead and discuss that, and if anybody, let's do a staff report on that first.
Thank you, Mayor, the city clerk, Michelle Radcliffe, and I had a conversation about this just prior to the meeting. And I initially stated that we are looking for guidance from the governor about the Brown Act that was suspended. And I believe around April first, they might lift the suspension on the Brown Act. And we were essentially planning towards an April. You know, first or later, a live meeting, I guess our first meeting in April would be April fifth, could be our first live meeting. And that gives us thirty days to prepare, I think we'll have no problem meeting that timeframe, assuming we don't have any further variance or. Assuming that, as we mentioned, the Brown Act. Gets reinstated the way it was, so I do know that we have Mr. Rudin, who. Would like to attend remotely, that's kind of a staff function, we, we will make sure that we can accommodate that request as well. So, but we're looking forward to live meetings and having you all back in person in the council chambers. And having the public come be, be invited back in, I was very excited today to see that. The mask mandate was lifted again in Santa Clara County, and. We're just looking forward to getting, getting back to normal, it certainly feels normal out there to me, so. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Let, let me just ask Attorney Rudin a question first, can we go directly now, can we continue with the way we are meeting right now, or are we required to. Go to live meetings from our, from our next meeting, or can that be postponed till April?
Let's see. And. I'm hoping the clerk can assist me with this question in terms of the passage of our last resolution. When was that passed, and when does that resolution expire?
Yeah, I think these are thirty-day resolutions, so there was.
Yeah, we passed the last resolution on February first, so today would have been the thirty days, so that's why this was back on the agenda. Because today was the deadline, or the last date that the resolution was.
So, so I think based on that, so the question is, we could do another resolution extending it for another thirty days, so I'm more concerned about. The April meeting, whether we have to have it in person, or can we continue to Zoom, or can we do a hybrid?
So, with respect to the April meeting and this particular resolution. Basically, as long as the governor's declared state of emergency with respect to the COVID pandemic remains in state. The council can continue having virtual meetings without following all of the teleconference requirements that the Brown Act typically requires. So just in the same manner that we're having this meeting now. This section of the Brown Act basically requires that you're supposed to reauthorize. By passing a resolution, you know, every thirty days thereafter, now. Realistically, if you have a, you know, one or two-day lapse because you haven't met, you know, in a thirty-day period. You know, I, I think the likelihood of. That being challenged is relatively low, so I think the reality, the, the question here is. You know, I would recommend passing this particular resolution, given that we are now in March, and we are having a teleconference meeting right this minute. But if you want to do something different for April, certainly that's something that's appropriate to discuss now.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem, I can check your head up.
Yes, perhaps we can have a discussion on, on a hybrid situation where. You know, for sure that we've got some council members that are attending in person at City Hall. And if it would be acceptable for some people, some council members, if they feel uncomfortable not to attend in person. And, but be available via Zoom, and then also for our, for the public to be able to attend either. A in person and to be able to speak, and to be able to attend via Zoom and be able to speak. If we could have some conversation about that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Luthen.
Yeah, I was going to, to, to speak to somewhat the same thing that Mayor Protem Mekachuk brought up, which is. I think we need the guidance on an ongoing basis to review what the state is doing, I think we don't have that yet. But maybe we can bring this back as an ongoing matter as early as the next meeting. If we're aiming for April, we need an update as to what's going on with what can be done, because. It's probably not going to be all or nothing, snap back to the old meeting requirements with. And a quorum required to be in the council chambers and so forth. But it may be, and so we're going to need to know exactly what those rules are as they develop, as we aim to get back together. For the month of March, it does seem to make sense to extend and then see where we are, because. As, as Mr. Mekachuk said, a mixed hybrid would be nice, but we don't know whether the state's going to allow that. The second thing I wanted to point out is, in the attached resolution, it looks like there's a typo. The, the basis for this, based on the number of cases. Had the dates from February twenty-something to February twenty-something else. And they were in reversed order, I think the first one may have been meant to be January, but if Ms. Radcliffe. Correct that, that would be great.
Will do.
All right, it's good discussion, and Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm glad that we talked about this, it is, it is kind of confusing, obviously. Meetings are going to look different going forward with, with the changes that are probably going to be permanent because of this, but I, I would. I would move to approve this today, but I'd like to bring it back maybe at the next meeting, so just to kind of, you know, keep this, keep the conversation going, so we're, we're on top of it.
Okay, any other questions from council? If not, we'll go to the public to see if there's any questions from any members of the public. Okay, doesn't look like it, I guess we bring it back to council for discussion, but someone had a discussion, but if there's more discussion, please go ahead. All right.
I was just going to move to, to approve item three from the consent calendar with the idea that we would bring it back at the next meeting as well to discuss.
So, that. Okay, second by Councilmember Luthen, and I guess the direction would be to. Probably agenda is it, I would suggest agenda is it to add whether any future meeting should be. In person only, or, or, or whether they should be hybrid, either for council members or, or, and/or for the public or for both. So if, if you, when you put it on the agenda for next time, I would suggest we clarify that, if people in the public are interested, they can also address that issue, and we can. Also discuss that more fully. Is that acceptable, I don't know if that's a memory or a change or whatever. That works? Okay, yeah, Councilmember Mekachuk, I mean, Mayor Protem Mekachuk, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm wondering if at the next meeting, we could have kind of a, a survey, not a robust one, but just. Kind of find out what the other municipalities are doing around us, so that we're consistent with them, and we know what's going on. I would. Like to meet in person as soon as possible, but I also. Think that some of our constituents would like to attend remotely, and. Anything that gets the most participation. I would be in favor of.
Mayor Protem Mekachuk, I just want to give an update, the city clerks in Santa Clara County have been speaking, and there is. Data out there that I can provide if it affects meeting on, on our local jurisdictions. And who's going hybrid, who's doing in person or virtual, so I'll have that information for you next.
So that'll be a good, good part of the staff report that you present with the agenda. And that'll be helpful. Councilmember Lawler.
I have one more, one more thing to add to that, when, when you talk about polling, is it possible that we can, we can ask the other commissions? Better Streets Commission, Site and Architecture, on, on how comfortable they are as well?
Yes, we could do that, and, and I know that the conversation between the city clerks is. Whether it's all legislative bodies or just council, so I can provide that information as well.
Okay. Any other comments, so we have a motion and a second with some modifications or clarification of that, hopefully you got those. Miss Rettif.
I did.
Okay, great, thank you, so let's go to do a roll call, what?
Councilmember Tanner. You're on mute. Yes. Councilmember Lawler. Yes. Councilmember Luthen. Mayor Protem Mekachuk.
I.
And Mary Lahey.
I.
And that motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item says public hearings. Do we have any public hearings, we don't, and we don't have any unfinished business, and we don't have any new business. So we go straight to committee, commission reports, and we kind of mix that with the council member comments, you can do that. At the same time. So whoever wants to go first, please, as you have. Okay. Mayor Protem, I can check, thank you.
Yeah. I thought that. What I'd like to report from the ad hoc finance committee is that. We intend on getting together this Friday to review the opportunities to reduce the cost. Of renovating the annex building, and we'll be looking forward to coming back to council with some. Ideas, comments, and hopefully recommendations, so I just wanted to let you know that. We're doing some work on that, and we will be getting back to you. And Mayor Elhe and myself are on that, and the staff liaison is city manager Leon Artis.
All right, thank you, any other reports, comments, discussions? Looks like we don't have any, any further comments, discussions, I don't have any further to add today, so city manager's report is next. Philin Artis.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to mention two items. Number one, we have selected a date for our annual picnic, August twenty first, we will get that word out to the community as we get closer. And we staff will be working on securing vendors and getting that going, we were fortunate to get the same place that we always do, so. Good job to city clerk for getting that set up so far, and we also launched today the beginning of our community grants program as Mayor. Allah he alluded to earlier this evening, so beginning March first today through May third. You can access the application online at montessorino.org. And that way they can complete the application, and it'll be turned in, in the, in the form of a staff report, all the applications we received, council will select those. By May seventeenth, that concludes my report this evening, thank you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Michelle Artis, you, did you want to bring them up to date on the. Planning on this picnic, or recognizing some individuals as either citizens of the year or in some other capacity?
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, we had a discussion about that at our meeting last week, and I think we will be bringing a council an item. Perhaps at the strategicals annual meeting regarding the citizen of the year. Idea that we had a while back, or previous strategic goals, and the idea is to engage the public, select a citizen of the year in Montessorino, an outstanding resident. And recognize them at our annual picnic once a year as an ongoing event, so. I think the idea, bring it back for council to look at some initial. Initial selection criteria at our March twenty-second special. Strategicals, I mean, our special meeting with strategic goals, I'll have that report done.
Great, thank you, we missed one item because the recognition, the STEM, whereas. Is, is that, can we go forward with that, or should we just table that for next meeting? Miss Rettif, anybody show up on that? That was our recognition item. It was the first item.
Sorry, I apologize, let's move it to the. Let's move it to the next agenda because Mr. Forrest Williams did not log on, so I'll reach out to him tomorrow. If he's available on 15th.
And what else do we have? Mayor Protem Mekachuk, please go ahead.
I was wondering if Councilmember Lawler would like to close the meeting in honor of Philippa Alva's husband?
All right, before we do that, there's a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Is there anybody have any future agenda item that you'd like to see on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. That was a good suggestion from Mayor Protem Mekachuk. And the council, everybody signed a card for Ms. Philippa Villa. And we, Councilmember and I dropped it off the other day. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to her, but please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I just, thank you, Mayor Protem Mekachuk. I think this is a wonderful idea. So if I may, go ahead and adjourn this adjourn this meeting in the honor and memory of Jack Alva. May he rest in peace.
May he rest in peace.
Thank you. The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.